Okay, at 7:02 I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We don't have a quorum yet again. Roll call, James absent, Cheryl absent. I've called this meeting to remove James and Cheryl from the board because they are not attending regular meetings. They're holding illegal meetings. James has written himself a check, et cetera. This is a very drastic situation and I feel it necessary to vote these two off the board and elect any directors so that we can conduct business. We haven't been able to conduct business since the election and that's something that needs to change. I have proof of mailing where I've mailed certified mail to both James and Cheryl informing them that they will be removed by a vote at the board. The letter states, "This letter is to inform you that a petition calling for a special meeting has been circulated among the members and submitted to the secretary. A special meeting has been scheduled for April 18, 2025. You have the right to have a lawyer present and to call witnesses to testify on your behalf if you wish to contest the charges against you. There will be a vote at the members. If the results determine that you are to resign your position on the board and your position as the operator as per bylaws, it will relinquish all district property to the secretary on the night of the meeting." And this is proof of posting. It was posted at the community building and the post office. This is a proclamation setting forth the removal of directors of the Board of the Grady County Rural Water District 3. Voting will be held on April 18, 2025 at 7:30 PM for the directors of the Grady County Rural Water District 3. Okay. And... I have about four pages of charges on James Manka and I'm gonna read those.
Off the board? Who tells us?
Okay. Request for special meeting to address concerns before the annual meeting for 2026. Under Article 7 of the bylaws that govern the Grady County Rural Water District 3 formerly known as the Bradley Water Company Incorporated, titled Meetings of Members, Section 2, Special Meetings that the members may be called at any time by the action of the board of directors and such meeting must be called whenever a petition requesting such meeting is signed by at least 10% of the members and presented to the secretary or the board of directors. The purpose of every special meeting shall be stated in the notice thereof and no business shall be transacted thereat except such as is specified in the notice. Article 8, Directors and Officers, Section 7 states, "Officers and directors may be removed from office in the following manner. Any member, officer, or director may present charges against the director or officers by filing them in writing with the secretary of the corporation. If presented by a member, the charges must be accompanied by a petition signed by 10% of the members of the corporation. Such removal shall be voted on at the next regular or special meeting of the members and shall be effective if approved by a majority vote at the members. The director or officer against whom such charges have been presented shall be informed in writing of such charges five days prior to the meeting and shall have the opportunity at such meeting to be heard in person or by counsel and to present witnesses and the person or persons presenting such charges against him shall have the same opportunity. If the removal of a director is approved, such action shall also vacate any other office held by the removed director of the corporation. A vacancy on the board thus created shall immediately be filled by a vote of the majority of the members present and voting at such meeting. Section 3, Notice of the Meetings of the Members of the Corporation shall be given by a notice mailed to each member of record directed to the address shown upon the books of the corporation at least 10 days prior to the meeting. Such notice shall state the nature, time, place, and purpose of the meeting but no failure or regularity of notice of any annual meeting regularly held shall affect any proceedings taken thereat. The purpose of this special meeting is to address the following concerns. We demand the immediate removal of James Manka from the board of directors for the following crimes and offenses under Oklahoma law. James wrote checks to himself on February 14 for $77.01, March 10 for $41, and on March 18 for $1,600 without board approval in violation of 21 OS 341, 1451, and 82 OS 1324.18. James spent money at Walmart without board approval and did not submit receipts or a purchase order in violation of 21 OS Sections 351, 1451A14, and 75 OS 85 et cetera. James wrote a check to WSS Equipment Rental, a business owned by his sister's boyfriend, for a trackhoe rental without board approval in violation of 82 OS 1281. James is using the director's lawyer to advise and represent him in a private matter against the secretary in violation of 21 OS Sections 341, 1451A14, and 82 OS 1281. James has not submitted travel logs for the Rural Water District truck, unlawful termination of operators with no prior disciplinary action or paperwork, James paid employees a final paycheck without board approval, James hired or appointed his wife Vicki to be the bookkeeper and his son Edwin to be the meter reader. Edwin is not on the district's insurance. There were no meter readings on some of the bills sent on April 1. There have been overcharges and late fees on bills during the last two billing cycles for February and March. Members have a right to sue under Title 82, Section 1273. James entered into contracts with Gisma Storage and AT&amp;T without board approval in violation of 82 OS 1324.18. James will not submit the AT&amp;T contract to the secretary. James violated the governmental entity resolution that requires two signatures on checks. James has posted two illegal meeting agendas and changed the date on one agenda after he posted it in violation of 25 OS 31138. James and Cheryl are always together in violation of 25 OS 3042. James refused to accept certified mail from the secretary containing 26 record requests in violation of 51 OS 248.17. James refused to give secretary a copy of his meeting minutes after the illegal special meeting on April 1 in violation of 25 OS 312A, 51 OS 248.17, and the district's bylaws. Any action taken in willful violation of the Open Meeting Act shall be invalid according to 25 OS 313. James has obtained new memberships, terminated memberships, removed water meters without submitting work orders in violation of OS 1324.18. James refused service for a medical emergency without board approval in violation of 82 OS 1324.18 in the Americans with Disabilities Act. James wrote a refund check to a member without board approval in violation of 82 OS 1324.18. James has refused to produce bills, receipts, purchase orders, and work orders and travel logs to the board of directors during regular meetings. During special meeting on January 29 bills and purchase receipts were not reviewed or accepted. During the regular meeting on February 10 bills and purchase receipts were not reviewed or accepted. James disrupted the board's ability to conduct business in concert with Nadeline Harrington. James did not attend the regular meeting on March 10. Therefore, business cannot be conducted because he has the bills. James held an illegal meeting on April 1. Meeting minutes have not been approved since the special meeting on February 10. James has blocked the secretary's phone number and refuses to accept certified mail from the secretary refusing to receive and/or approve meeting agendas and minutes from the secretary. No business has been conducted since the election on January 21. James and Vicki have refused to answer calls from members about their water service or bills. James has not called 811 before digging. DEQ was not notified of leaks before digging. Water has not been tested before restoration after repairs. No boil orders were issued after repairs. We demand the immediate removal of Cheryl Newton for accessory to embezzlement violating the Open Meeting Act and breach of fiduciary duty. Cheryl stated during the illegal special meeting on April 1 that she told James he deserved to be paid for being the operator thereby giving James permission to write himself a paycheck. She did not have the authority to do this. Cheryl ignores text messages and phone calls from the secretary refusing to receive and/or approve meeting agendas and minutes from the secretary. Cheryl did not attend regular meeting on March 10. Therefore, the board did not have a quorum. James and Cheryl are always together in violation of 25 OS 3042. We, the members of the district, allege that James Manka and Cheryl Newton are guilty of public corruption, breach of fiduciary duty, abuse of power, and improfessionalism. The proposed date and time of special meeting is Monday, April 18, 2025 at 7:00 PM. This is the blurred out signature sheet that was circulated that nine members signed. That is 20% of the membership. Only 10% is necessary to call a special meeting to order. All you have to do is come up, get a ballot, write whether or not you want to remove these directors, and put it in a tray behind me and I'll collect them and I'll count them off. I'll need all this, but I was prepared.
Okay, so we vote them off and we have a water leak tomorrow. Who's gonna fix it?
James can still be the interim operator until we find another operator and we're gonna have to publish an ad in the paper, on Facebook, wherever, and then hire someone else. But until then, we're gonna have to be in compliance with DEQ. So he'll have to be the operator until we find a replacement.
Do you think that he would want to be? I mean, would he? I mean, it's not like we can force him. Be like, well, you're still operator.
Well, it's not like he's turning over the truck either. You know, we had an operator. We had Cody and he wouldn't allow Cody to use the truck. He didn't wanna work with him. He gaslighted Cody, said he quit when he didn't, and I was confused. I really was confused. I didn't see a W4 for Cody. I didn't see any employment paperwork on Cody. So I didn't know what was going on.
Is that something the members can get together and fix? I mean, I'm willing to work.
We don't have every opportunity. We've had regular meetings after regular meetings.
I'm talking about if we have a water leak.
Do what?
If there's a water leak, can we all get together and fix it?
You have to be a licensed operator.
You have to be licensed with DEQ to touch these lines.
Because we can do that if any soil hits that water, makes that water contaminated and...
So could we hire, like, a side plumber?
Well, technically, yeah. All we have to do is get his DEQ license. But yeah, a plumber is pretty much what we need. But if we can get one that's licensed with DEQ or generally, we can hire someone and then send them to school to get his DEQ license. That's what we did with Culture and Cody. They were hired, they were sent to school. And they didn't have any prior experience with plumbing or waterworks.
With the laws on that, they have to work under somebody that's been good and licensed for so long.
Yeah. Yeah. I brought that with me too.
How long is that?
About two years. I think it's two years.
The problem with the contractor, you're not just gonna call and they're not gonna jump down your...
You have to work under somebody for one year unless you go to school and go through the classes. The quicker they send us through school, the less we have to have somebody. Until the new board took over, we had a whole nother water district that was willing to help us with anything we needed. They would send men, trucks, equipment, supplies. The new board took over and Jamie said, "Nope, I don't need none of them. I do this myself."
Can we ask them again?
Patrick said, I mean, Phillip said he didn't want anything more to do with it. He has washed his hands with district. We're having trouble getting people to help us. The CPA will not talk to me. The lawyer will not talk to me. We're having trouble retaining operators. And we've had this trouble since Jamie...
Well, the problem with an operator too is the money that they get paid. If you're an operator, you're licensed to work on sewer plants, all that kinda stuff. They're not gonna come down here and work for 1,600 a month and make $200,000 a year working with it and they're not gonna do it.
Yeah, this is one of those jobs where you're gonna have to find somebody who's already trying a social security check, who just wants to supplement their income.
And or somebody who doesn't have a large overhead that lives very minimalistically.
Yeah, we're honestly at risk of losing our water management. 'Cause let's say we do vote Jamie off and he automatically loses his operator position if we don't find somebody. What are we gonna do? 'Cause DEQ's not gonna step in and take this over. I already talked to him. That's not their job. But we've gotta get him off the board just so we can conduct business.
Okay, so I'm confused on getting them off the board because I witnessed Ms. Newton resign publicly.
Yeah, I did too. But she went ahead and signed that one sentence statement that Jamie handwrote on a piece of paper that said I was off the board. She went ahead and signed it after she said she resigned. So I wanna make it official so that there can't be any argument and no misunderstandings.
Okay, so if we vote them both off, does that not, someone correct me, we're failure to govern so no water department?
No, no, no. You weren't hearing. You missed it when I read this. It says in the bylaw, "A vacancy on the board thus created shall immediately be filled by a vote of the majority of the members present and voting at such meeting." So when we vote them off, we immediately hold an emergency election immediately afterward and vote new directors on the board.
Okay, so with that being said, I'll just call out the old fit in the room. Who gonna put their name out there to get, oh, this BS mudsworm on him? Anybody? Okay, nobody's gonna run, so we're failure to govern.
I will. I will do it, but I want to make sure that I got you guys back yet. I don't want to be stuck where there's nobody at the meetings because we gotta make some decisions. There's gotta be a lot of changes here.
Who's gonna go down?
The bylaws need to be fixed.
If people wanna run a trackhoe, you need somebody willing to put water meters in.
It is not just sitting up here, you know, doing paperwork.
Yeah, it has to be balanced. You have to balance the operations. You have to have folks. Jamie thinks he's the only person necessary to run this district and that's not true 'cause he's writing himself checks. He's spending money at Walmart without board approval. He's refusing to produce receipts. I don't know why he's buying at Walmart.
He's refusing to talk to me about my water deals 'cause there's nobody...
Nobody can contact him. I can't contact him.
Well, let him keep writing the checks. The money's gonna run out. The money will run out.
And you're okay with that? You're okay with that? You're okay with this town opening water?
No, I'm not okay with it, but y'all three voted yourselves up there, so y'all three made the mess.
Why didn't you nominate somebody?
Because I just opened the floor. Who in this room? Because you said we're gonna have an emergency thing if we vote them off.
Do you want Jamie to stay on the board?
He'll quit next month because when he writes itself his paycheck this month, we're broke. He's had an excavator for two weeks. We're broke.
We're getting there.
If he's done everything illegal, I mean, it's all on paper. If he's done illegal, the laws will step in there eventually.
They're not going to.
Yeah.
Because Cheryl gave him permission to do it.
Then it's not illegal.
That's the problem.
Then it's not illegal.
Exactly. I've already been through this with the sheriff's office. He can do whatever he wants to so long as Cheryl gives her permission and as long as she's legally on the board and she's giving him permission to do it, there's nothing I can do. My hands are tied, even though I'm on the accounts.
Well, she's not legally on the board. She resigned. And she told us last week she resigned.
But it's not filed at the courthouse that she resigned. It's not on paper that she resigned. It's all word of mouth.
But Bradley, the courthouse doesn't care what Bradley says. When the board gets a new board, they don't have to run that through the court clerk because they don't care. Bradley is kinda outta everybody's jurisdiction. When we call the sheriffs over, there's nothing they can enforce. They can't enforce town, state, federal. They can't enforce any laws over here.
We have no bylaws.
Where all our own little thing, nobody else in the world cares about this town.
Do you wanna fix it? It can be fixed with the right people on the board. It can be fixed.
The right people don't want on the board and you can take this however you want. That tripod sitting right there is why the right people don't want on the board.
I'm not afraid of it.
You're not the right person.
The board of trustees aren't afraid of it.
Another thing is, somebody has an average job. One day they wanna get on a trackhoe after they work 10 hours a day and they're up there digging a mud hole and slinging shit around. It looks stupid for $1,600 a month after they... You need somebody that just, I mean, hey, Jamie, as long as the water's on, I don't give a shit who runs. As long as the water's on, they're not gonna take time and do it right. Hey, I mean, there's no...
Well, he's not doing it right though. He never calls Oki whenever he digs a hole.
Hey, hey, go right up here, Farquhar.
Who's calling Oki if you're here?
Every time we dug one, we called.
Yep.
But we have...
He doesn't wanna do nothing.
We need to have...
He's gonna wanna say nothing.
I haven't seen any...
'Cause we do the trial. Because he's out there digging up Cheryl's. When she hits a gas line and blows up down the town...
He's in there digging by himself in there.
We don't have to guarantee that Jamie will even keep doing it. He's not sure that's the meaning. He knows he's out. He knows he can't write checks for himself, so...
This water company's been, he is right. We've always had touring. We've always had somebody to help or they didn't. And Claude did it by himself. We've always done it by ourselves, right?
'Cause forever it's never been done right, really. I mean, it's just been done how we need to do it to fix it.
No, because nobody...
Well, you got jobs. Everybody got a job. You know, Allen Bell, he does it by himself unless Juan's in the help.
Yeah, exactly. That's it.
While he did it by himself.
And they didn't have a second job, so they did fine, right? They didn't have a second job, did they?
No, you've got to have somebody that don't have a second job to work this way.
Now, that's hard in today's economy.
That's why I recommend somebody being on social security doing this job.
They're not able.
I'm on social security.
But by the time they get good...
They're stuck in making work.
Most of these...
I don't mean the senior citizen. They're like on their 30s on call. They're not social security.
Who do you think's...
When you said it, I didn't...
The social security thing, all the water lines me and Culture dug up and had to fix, they're eight feet deep.
Yeah, 'cause I've got something on there. That's weighty.
Being on social security, you're old and on social security. Can you crawl in an eight-foot hole?
Son, she just said...
Yeah, exactly.
She means senior citizens that earned it, not the no accounts that won't work.
'Cause I mean, the loophole, if you're gonna do it right when you dig a hole, you're supposed to put steel structures down in there. You got ocean ball.
Because you have to have two for any of our water lines for how deep they are. Because if you're by yourself and you're eight foot in that hole and it collapses, there's nobody there to get you out or call somebody and say you're in there. Somebody just gonna drive by in three or four hours and be like, "Well, the excavator's still here, but..."
Check on you tomorrow.
There's a lot of things that need to change, but they're not gonna change with Jamie running the whole thing by himself.
Is anybody else gonna be any better than?
That's right.
How do we know?
You don't, they could. You might get worse than that.
It's just like the town board. Everybody's gonna have disagreements. Earl disagreeing, me all disagreeing, him. We all have disagreements. That's something y'all gotta stand and work out amongst yourselves. And to me, it's a power play. Y'all butting heads like this and who's got the biggest thing? I can swing 'cause I wanna be the big dog.
James is trying to gaslight me off the board because he doesn't want me on the accounts. He doesn't want me to see the checks he's writing for himself or the checks he's writing at Walmart. And that's my job. Oversight is my job.
But the whole thing is, he can't, he can't make you get off the board as long as we don't force it, right?
So I'll be holding regular meetings by myself with no quorum and he's holding illegal meetings.
But after agreement, you'll happily off, correct?
Yeah, but it takes the attorney general to enforce it. I have to file a petition with the attorney general.
Well, maybe we need to all load up, go over and talk to him at the courthouse and say, "Hey, we gotta have something done." I mean, something needs to be done.
Well, you have, you can sue under Title 82. You can sue for service and billing rates.
As long as, as long as we have a new board.
It makes the problem worse.
What I understand, as long as we had a new board, why haven't we tried to get an operator to get Jamie on board, remember? Why haven't we tried to make you the secretary or board member? 'Cause you're playing both parts right now.
I don't have much of a choice.
They were supposed to run an ad, but Jamie wanted to pay himself.
We're sitting here just arguing about those stuff that ain't, we're spinning our wheels, hoping I'm making no headway.
When the new board took office, me and Culture were still operating. Then Jamie cut us our check that said, "Final payment," because he said we didn't, it's no call, no show. But I told him, "You have the truck and the only wellhouse key? I can't do my job if you don't give me access to the things to do my job." He wanted to pay himself after the DEQ told him he could not.
You're right about everything. He didn't have board approval to terminate anybody. And he didn't have board approval to appoint himself the operator either. He was supposed to be a reserve operator temporarily. And he was supposed to resign from the board and he didn't. There's a lot going on.
Wait a minute. Wouldn't all of y'all, when y'all stepped in, gonna be temporary?
Travis made that decision. He told us what to do.
Yep, he's gonna be temporary secretary and bookkeeper and then Jamie's gonna be president and temporary...
And that was supposed to expire on March 29. And now here it is.
Ah, here we are. There's gonna be more members and you're still being secretary at the same time. You're calling a candle black. You're saying Jamie's gonna operate and he gonna listen and doing nothing. You doing the same thing though. You wanna be secretary where you can help control money, but then you wanna be pulling strings as a board member. Can't have you taking any too.
This temporary thing you're talking about, what was...
That was fair. Travis Henry suggested that we hold this, that Jamie be the reserve operator for 60 days and then I would be the bookkeeper for 60 days. It didn't apply to being a secretary. It was the employee positions, bookkeeper and operator, because everybody quit all at the same time.
And the 60 days is that?
It expired on 29. He should be, but he's not because we still need an operator under DEQ.
But he hasn't agreed to that.
He's not gonna agree to anything that doesn't work in his favor. I mean, if everybody wants me off the board, I'll leave.
But he can refuse to do it.
We're still gonna have to hire someone. I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna keep this district alive if we can't sort this out and get decent people on the board who are gonna do everything the right way, get an operator who doesn't think he's John Wayne and he can use dowsing drives to find water lines. You know, we gotta do so. The only way to dissolve it is for all three board members to sign a petition that gets submitted to the county commissioners. That's the only way to dissolve it. I looked into it. And we don't have three board members right now. We don't have three board members who are willing to attend a regular meeting and take care of business.
Okay, imagine Jamie was not afraid, but he didn't want all the argument.
Why did he start it?
I don't think he was there.
Y'all still don't?
He's been trying to gaslight me off the board since February 10. Ever since Nadeline threw a fit over the email, he's been trying to gaslight me off the board.
Well, I didn't see that.
Well, how about this? Who would wanna put their hand in the ring on this? Who would you? 'Cause this is all we got. I mean, this is all we're gonna have up here, so who wants to...
She said that she would as long as we continue to come to meetings. I was gonna, I can't guarantee I'll be at a lot of meetings. I'm busy at 7:00 PM, which is why I can't be on the board. I'm starting school, so I'm not available. When I am available, I will be.
There's a lot of things that I think that we can change, but we have to get together because it takes a vote. And this is not just board members. This is, this is members. You guys are the power. So that's what we need is for you guys to come in and you guys need to suggest things you think we need. I mean, you guys can't be silent because you are the people that are here for us.
So I mean, we have, how many, do we have to have two tonight?
Yeah. We're gonna have two tonight. It's gotta be, according to the bylaws, it has to be done the same night. A removal and emergency election.
My problem with being on the board is I know three people in town that have the DEQ license to work on the water lines. And if I'm on the board, there's only two of them.
Yeah. Then it'll make somebody that...
Yeah, we might need you to be on there.
Me and Desiree and Culture have our licenses to do that.
You guys are, you're a full operator.
I have my license. I am not capable. I just got a clear vote.
You can help occasionally if I need.
Yes. I'm good at handing stuff down to adults.
That's very positive.
Here's the thing though, wait. If Debbie gets on the board, if we vote to hire you, that would be nepotism unless she recuses herself from...
I'm not saying I wanna be hired. You ain't know what I can do it. I'm gone five days out of me.
Right. Yeah, you're truck driver.
So...
I'm just saying.
Tony's out.
Just started running equipment. I'm licensed and...
So you're volunteering to run the equipment at the meeting?
If you seem like you're interested in it.
Okay.
If you're locked in town, yeah.
Okay.
Is it possible to send several people to school so we have them?
Well, we've already done that. We've had Jamie, Culture, and Cody to school.
I mean, we gotta come up with...
I know.
So many of them come in by my house.
So why can't we just send them?
And the basic license is only $60. So if I remember from the checks.
For a lot of people, that's expensive.
Yeah, but the Rural Water District has to pay for it.
Letting mine go into school, that don't mean they can't fall in a hole of it. At least they can be there.
I know, I know where Jamie was down, down there by the house. I went down there to help. And I helped him walk up there. But they were people that drove by and just looked at them and never offered to help. From right there.
Some people are scared they're gonna get yelled at.
No.
They just don't care. Well, both.
The problem with helping Jamie is he thinks he knows, and he doesn't. He went and bought special tools to fix the one at Ricky's, climbed in there, and it wasn't needed a tool, the connection was bad, but he thought we could just keep crimping it until it got tight enough it quit leaking. When it's got a hole, you can stick your fingers through, you're not crimping that back shut.
That's something I would've done.
I had to teach Jamie and Travis how to fix it. Just like right now, down there looking for Cheryl's water meter, he using them water witching sticks and dowling rods or whatever, and every time he thinks he find one, they dig a hole, and then there's no water meter.
Yeah.
The easiest way to find it?
He's telling the truth.
Is you look at the water meter on both sides, and just dig up until you find the line, and follow the line until you find the meter.
I think her meters in front yard there, I'm pretty sure, when we moved that for John, we moved that for John, I'm pretty sure it's in front yard, I don't know exactly where, but it was in the alley.
When they give us the paperwork to read the meters?
Is there not a map?
Somebody knows where it is, because it was off, 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 and then they turned it on.
Yeah.
They used.
Somebody went and turned it on, but you can't tell me, all the years that house sat empty, the water meter was on, and it didn't freeze and bust and flood that house.
You remember those tall T co stores, there was three meters that was there, they ran in a track hole, now the three meters are gone, so I'm not a hundred percent sure they had it tied in.
Me and Colter dug up and I found like six different meters, y'all helped me find meters?
Yeah.
Every meter we found down there does not go to her house, she's not even sure that she has a water meter, she thinks she may be on well water. That's what I said, cause it's sitting empty for years, and then when Natalie give us the paperwork, it tells me how much you paid every year or every month. That was off until like June, and then it's turned on, but nobody knows where the water. How was it turned on if you don't know where it was? There was, I don't know what has happened since Jamie got home everything. We go and Natalie would give us the meter readings, it has everyone's name, and it has your water usage, every time that meter's been read, she kept it documented. I mean, she did round up on y'all bills, so what we wrote down is.
Yeah, I can put one hundred and get charged for it now.
I got some, go get your bill by then, I got some at fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a month, the more open my mouth and the madder I got, the bigger my water bill got.
And this didn't, this just didn't start with that.
It's always been that way, just like when, if you had a garden or a swimming pool, your water bill went up, whether you used it or not, you had a garden and a swimming pool, so you were using water somewhere.
I had my son call the place, but dad, or as I had with her mother-in-law, well, we rounded back and we rounded up.
You're paying for water.
Yeah, yeah, and then before you round it up again, you're paying for water from the last little place. Yeah, eventually you pay thirty, forty water bills to never use.
Is that in the model?
It is in the model.
Yeah, that's.
It is a. I do not have a water bill.
You're not voting?
Yeah. I have a meter in my name, but I'm not.
You're not voting?
Water bill in my name, yeah.
If you got a meter, how are you not gonna deal?
Because I'm not connected to city water yet.
So, you're not paying the reserve?
Somehow, they don't even charge her to have the meter like they charge everybody else, because when I get mine before I turn it on, it's ten dollars a month, just to have the water meter.
Yes, that's what they're trying to do.
But I think they did that to Zana, because Zana was gonna vote one time, and Natalie knew which way she would vote, so she told her, you can't vote, you don't have water.
That's happened so many times, and I found in Title eighty-two, section thirteen, twenty-four point twelve, that any individual who fails to become a participating member within thirty days, shall be eligible to hold office as a director, nor shall any individual which fails to become a participating member within ninety days, shall be qualified to participate at any meeting or vote, so if you've paid your bill within thirty days, you can vote, and if you've paid your bill within, no, wait, I got that backwards, if you've paid your bill within thirty days, you can hold office, if you've paid your bills within ninety days, you can vote. So, I think that's always been misinterpreted, uh, there's no reason for anybody in this town to not be able to vote or hold office, if you, if you've got your bill paid, if you don't have an outstanding bill after thirty days, it shouldn't be a problem.
I'm available fixing things, because just like last time, my paycheck they gave me, went right back into it, because it is too hard to deal with that board to try to get parts for things, so their paycheck they paid me, I just bought the stuff we needed to keep everybody flowing.
We're just making it all out to where your town, like, it's on Facebook, because Facebook is the all around.
They just need to let us use the money, American Water Works, yeah, the water business, but they have what I need, the local depot has what you need to fix this building, then it got six extra pieces of water. The guy that runs American Water Works lives in. He gave me his number, he said, hey, if it's after hours, call me, I'll bring it to you. Might have over things maybe need to be given when we shut it off, but we already had it dug up, had the parts ordered.
You gotta shut up and find what the problem is, we don't want it to be fixed.
I always told people, let's dig it up and find it first, get a parts list, get the parts, shut it off, fix it, turn everybody back on, if you're off, it's maybe thirty minutes, and I got your back.
And you guys were good enough to tell us.
Most generally, before somebody, when somebody would come by me and ask why the water's off, I'm already turning it back on, and I wouldn't get lippy with some people, and it'd be a lot quicker if you quit asking me questions, instead of standing there talking to you and saying, fix it.
Cody, when you're standing over and working, that's common sense.
It's not rocket science, none of it's hard.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it makes it worse.
I've never liked that Jamie did it, because Jamie always wants to shut it off on the weekend when everybody's home, do it during the week when most people are at work, that way you're not affecting everybody, or the people that just come home from work, trying to take a shower. And don't shut it off today to work on a Monday.
Best time is when everybody's working, the kids are going to school, the whole, you know.
That's what I always try to tell Colter, and his job works with him, so he can come do it, I work two days a week for my real job, I can be around, we can get it done, most generally, y'all don't even know. Rachel, she's saying that without turning the water on, if I can get a little wet, keep everybody flowing.
Okay, I'm gonna read the results, James Mago is off the board by five votes, or no, it's four votes, yes, one vote no, Cheryl Newton is off the board by five votes, yes, zero, no. They're both off the board. And now, we need nominations for new board members.
Hi, shouldn't your ass deal and chopping block with them though?
I don't know, should it?
I mean, if you, I mean, you're sitting there.
There has to be at least one board member up here.
Okay, well, if that's the case, you're holding their meetings or illegal, and you're doing it by yourself.
Usually illegal as they are.
There's a difference, their meetings are over there.
But at least hers are the ones that they all sit together and sit at the courthouse, we're gonna have it that day.
Let me, let me say this, why don't you pick a position right now and let somebody run for either secretary or your board position membership?
Secretary is a board position.
No, you can't have both positions, you either got a secretary or a board member, you can't be both.
The way the water runs, it is president, vice president, secretary, and then they have the bookkeeper.
Right, let's go say H D B bookkeeper or board member.
I'm not a bookkeeper, I resigned, no, no, I'm not a bookkeeper.
So, are we voting for a, a bookkeeper as well?
We're voting for two board members, we're gonna vote.
We gotta have a third seat filled.
I am the third seat.
There's four seats.
No, there's not, it's in the bylaws, there are three seats.
You can't, you can't be voting for a being paid position same time, but the state law.
I was never paid, I was never paid, and I'm still not being paid.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but you're opening up an election for two new members, you need to open up a position for another one as well.
There are only three members on the board.
That's three.
There's secretary, president and vice president, there are only three members in the bylaws.
We get two new board members tonight, what are you gonna do, you gonna stay, be secretary and still be a member?
I'm still, I'm, the secretary is a board member, you're trying to separate the two.
We have our own board members and our own secretary.
You don't understand, that's the way it is in the bylaws, I'll show you.
But the state law trumps the bylaws.
No, it does not.
Yes, it does, and federal law trumps state law.
If you go to work for any reason, our bodies will cover.
The waters, the way they filed it.
Lawyers, they'll tell you that the law says in the state of Oklahoma, no, I don't care if you're on a dirt digging committee, you cannot hold two positions same time, you can't.
There's not two positions.
The way they have, instead of y'all having a chair of one, two and three?
Yeah, but like Rita couldn't be on a, uh, the post office, and hold a different job at the school, saying, no, that's against the law, can't do it, that's when she resigned.
That's bad.
Yeah, see, that's, but the laws apply the same to this, because you have your straight, you have your regular laws, anytime you make a wrong bylaws.
And I called the secretary of state and talked to her, and then I called the district attorney's office.
Our district attorney here is a joke.
Well, I don't, I don't know that, I'm just saying, that's, that's what I just told.
Okay, well, like I said, well, we're gonna get rid of them, but we're gonna say her, that her controls two board positions, she gonna be secretary.
I don't have two board positions.
You applied for it at the election when you run for it.
No, I don't have two board positions.
But you, yes, you, it's the great first meeting.
You don't understand the bylaws.
The Oklahoma outlawed, uh, the bylaws, the problem is, she gonna try to control everything regardless who else is up her position, we're gonna run the same problem.
Uh, excuse me, if I'm up there with her, that will not work.
You'll have to deal with that right there.
No, I won't.
Well, why is it fair, why is it fair to put Sherri and Jamie on the, on there and she get voted, when it's written down, why don't we wipe her out, put a whole new board on there?
Let me, let me say this, don't the bylaws say that this board is made up by water holders of this community, then that's water boards of the community are built, so, hey, we want her to resign.
You're saying that Sherri quit, that's right, you need to pull up the YouTube videos, where all three of them are sitting on camera at different times, I resign, I resign, I resign, so that, that don't mean shit then.
And one of them resigned.
I'm not saying on the video, but you know, Cheryl told me that.
The problem with putting her off right now?
Oh, she said right there, she told us it.
But the problem with putting her off is like when Christie and Jamie got on the town board, mom had to stay, because mom wanted off that night.
Yeah.
State law says one person has to transfer the new people over and then can go, cause if we vote better off tonight, it's failure to govern, you can't even elect new people.
I hear we address that at another time.
Well, being a board member though.
Or say she doesn't resign in February.
Let's get started.
Cause that's the text message that Jamie sent.
No, that's from the lawyer.
Yeah, that's what the lawyer sent it from, it's from her text message, when she said, I'm done, it didn't say I quit, it says, I'm done, I'm done, I'm done talking to you, I'm done helping the chairs.
I'm done looking for you.
My deal is, my deal is, it's kind of conflict of interest if you wanna hold, you know, like, you know, by being on the board, when you was on the board, it makes, it's conflict of interest, cause you're having to write checks, then you have to make decisions at the same time. You know, and that way, if you can write checks, and you're making a decision, you can say, well, I'm gonna visit this and do this late, cause I'm, I'm gonna write checks, if you don't hold that late, then I'm.
And I, if somebody talks to me, I'm not gonna go back and make statements.
Okay, here it is.
Okay, but because I was. Regardless of all the rules and everything, our water is at jeopardy, and I am taking care of my children and my elderly father, I cannot be without water, they are diabetic. They need water.
Okay, if our water line breaks from all this shit you're telling him, you think he's gonna come and fix the water, he's gonna say they have hands?
We still, I mean, I do wanna point out that we do have other options.
Like what?
If, if they can't get to it though.
You had to work under license operator for two years, plus they're in state Oklahoma.
Well, you can send them the.
See, like, by rights, really Jamie is not licensed operator by law, cause he had to work under license operator for two years that he never did.
Oh, my gosh.
But when me and Colter do it, Phil from.
Right, that wouldn't be legal, cause y'all was.
He has no problem coming to help us.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But when the new board took over and tried to say, we quit, that's when Phil backed out, cause I'm here for them, I don't care about y'all, I'll help these guys, if we need him, I'm sure he'll step back over here for us and help us.
Yeah, but see, I'm not saying any of this is ideal.
Oh, no, it's not ideal by no logic, I mean, yeah.
And I mean, I think that, you know, we, you guys have valid points, and that the, the arguing continues after there are new board members, then we need to reassess again, right?
Okay, well, if we get new board members or not, how long does it gotta be before we can put our ass on the chopping block?
I would give it, so.
Why don't we give her a chance, we're looking at all the laws.
We have it. Okay, but the problem is, okay, okay, when she has mad at the water, she thought.
It's like, it's like, it's like, if I was her, I'd hold myself up to higher standard goals, and say, hey, I'm either gonna be a board member, or I'm gonna be the clerk, I'm not gonna try to hold, I'm not gonna try to control two deals on this deal.
Okay, listen, I'm gonna read this, it says Article eight, directors of.
I don't think, are you representing yourself as a lawyer, cause you can break the laws.
The board of directors of this corporation shall consist of three members.
Right.
That's what it says, three members, secretary, president, vice president, that's all we've got, that's all we've ever had.
Well, then you're back to thinking of leaving having a two check system, cause you can sign a check, and it, it make, you're carrying two votes.
You had Natalie as a bookkeeper.
Exactly, and it was a free board member with Natalie.
It's like the, the bookkeeper is like Rachel's position on the town board, so they don't actually have a vote.
Right, I know that, I know that. She's voting, but she's got votes.
She's not the bookkeeper.
Yes, she is.
No, no, Jamie's all that, she can't, she's. Yeah, she was before.
She was, just like Jamie was supposed to be the interim operator, they were supposed to run an ad and find somebody to take that position, before they run the ad and found somebody, they got in their.
One, one thing, this is ever gonna be right, three board members and a secretary, that's what you're gonna do.
Yeah, oh, a hundred percent.
That's what we need, we need.
In order to do that, we have to change the bylaws, cause the bylaws say there are three members, and that's what we have, that's what we're working with, and it's saying from the beginning that we're supposed to have, that we should have three members and our good secretary.
Okay.
Okay, but, this is a corporate, um, by the, by the town, it was on, the town members on this water. The town members on this water.
Are you saying the secretary and the board and the bookkeeper are the same, or that's two different people?
The secretary, basically, and a board member is two different things, Rachel is our secretary, bookkeeper, all that stuff.
He's trying to say that I'm the bookkeeper, and I'm not.
Okay, then y'all need to open up a position tonight for a bookkeeper then, but you don't wanna do that.
Wait, but the bookkeeper is not.
I said, well, no, he's like, no, 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 we only have three board members.
You've missed the target of everything I've said.
Everybody calm down, I mean, let the ladies speak, so that everybody can hear each other clear words.
There were, there's three board members, and there's three present candidates, with the president, vice president and secretary, those are all board members, so there's a bookkeeper, which is a separate position, that's a main position, the secretary is a main position.
Just like the operator.
Right, 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 but the problem down there is, we're going to need two board members, we need two board members and a secretary, cause she's a board member, she's saying she's a board member, I'm not.
Oh, my gosh, that's what we have to go over this.
Okay, so she's a board member, we need.
I'm a secretary, I've always been a secretary.
Well, we need one then tonight then, but she don't release it, she's saying, no, 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 no.
Okay, so we need a president.
She's released it already.
Because she's the secretary, not the bookkeeper, gotcha.
So, the bookkeeper's a separate position, but the bookkeeper, we would have to hire someone most likely outside town, um, we would have to place ads, there are some people maybe in town that would be interested, um, it's, you know, it's a toss-up, we could go face it, place it out, and pop it, place the ads on Facebook.
So, how many?
That's what I was planning on, but he's not gonna listen.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, we had three board members, and now you're gonna use your bookkeeper, we need to sign that, and all of them. Well, we're just, we're a lot of, we're a lot of people still controlling our things, they're coworkers, controlling stuff.
The bookkeeper doesn't control anything.
Right, we have a bookkeeper.
Correct, correct, that's exactly it, we have.
That's what I'm saying, we have a bookkeeper, why, why, why we hoping for a bookkeeper's time if we don't have one?
Because a bookkeeper's not a elected position.
Somebody might want one, somebody might want one for bookkeeper that pays.
So, with the bookkeeper, because it's a paid position, um, you have to post ads legally, um, because.
And we never got around to it, that's the bylaw we start. We never got around to.
Yeah, the, the bylaw, that's how, we've never done that anyway.
So, they wanna do it on their end, and on their end.
Well, we're in an election now.
But, boardkeeper, a bookkeeper is not an elected position.
If you gotta vote or be.
Let's try to get one, but she don't want to get one, she wants to be here. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm.
She sent you a.
In order to have an ad, she has to have board approval and she needs.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and that's what I'm saying, but she said, no, she didn't talk to me. She said, her telling me, she not wanting to be that, she not wanting that. I know, she wasn't gonna run, you know what I mean? We've talked to lawyers a hundred times about this, about the board member being a clerk and stuff, and you have to separate the two places. That's a board member, you stand in another court's position, you cannot be paid because the laws Oklahoma stated, you can be paid because you're a board member, you know.
If I was doing the clerk, I couldn't make votes in the, when the board had votes and stuff, I had to be quiet, I had to be quiet because I was taking the.
When he ran, when he was Jamie on this, when he said, I'll be operating, and he said, you cannot pay yourself.
Right, exactly.
And then, Gil and Sherri talked to the lawyer that's never been here, and the lawyer said, well, yeah, if you're doing it, you can pay yourself. So, he's been paying himself. That's why he kicked me and called it off, because he wanted that paycheck, and I made three hundred dollars, and he called me down, Jamie made sixteen dollars.
He said, say today, somebody can run for the position, huh?
Yes.
Is anybody willing to have a position, is this just somebody that got a place?
It wasn't more than last time.
No, I don't think, a little not.
I just don't, I'm saying, I, 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 we even the board, but I just, I just asked and nothing happened, and nobody wanna part in none of this shit.
Nobody's gonna board on the town.
That's a good question, huh?
I'm a different smell, I'm already this, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, but board members have to be placed to approve running.
She can't do it, she doesn't leave an old position now.
We signed it.
Actually, I do, I'm a secretary.
No, I'm not a bookkeeper.
Oh, yeah, I'm not the bookkeeper.
Just like.
All the bills are.
When he said her phone, I was, basically telling her, you're a book.
Last meeting, our favorite's last meeting this month, Jamie called me for the same thing.
We need a bookkeeper now, or secretary or something.
Cause he's trying to run it like he did there in COVID.
What you're accusing.
Rachel, right by her, hers was doing that, hers was like seven hundred dollars. I went up there and we turned the water off and her meter was still running. It was a broke meter. All of our meters, everyone's meters are supposed to be replaced every six years. Our meters have over a million gallons of water. Put up a water door, it's on the house, it's, it ain't broken, this one out here, the water meter for this has seventy gallon tanks. I can go there and ask them, they'll probably be running too much, that water meter won't move. Cause I can turn it off and check it because they're wandering. This meter, either they've built this into that meter, or that meter broke and it's out of reach. So the town, every time they look at the party of their stuff, the town just pays the minimum water bill because the meter doesn't run.
Until, until April.
They were pretty fair, like I heard, it was like y'all breathing over. She bought her bill, paid her, she was pumping water. Didn't they, that man was figuring out his meter was broke? Her water bill was the same, five months in a row. Man said, we gotta fix your water meter, it's not working. When it reads double, it's not a problem. When it doesn't read, it's a problem. I think, there is a thing, is that when I come to play, y'all water meter, but that's probably.
My deal is, all the bugs, I mean, we're not, we're not. Everybody can't sit down and next to it, I'm sure, well, no, like, boom, without making a laundry display of ignorance on the facial media, we can't get it done.
I just said this, because we must try. Covid's in.
Never, that's all I'm thinking. Right, that's what I don't understand, I don't understand. Cause we're not gonna fix this anymore.
So what happens?
No, I just said, I'm thinking, everybody, everybody can play.
Well, the thing stays open until the following year, we're, we're supposed to hold elections during the.
Not a lot of good, you can't fill out laundry, you can't a lot of work stuff big, but then everybody starts carving all about. Everybody can say, um, what you. The highway can get it straight back.
Uh, following my conversation, I agree, secretary is, we started this, we're not done yet, and, uh, we make it one thing or four plus, the secretary plus the president, and it'll be, uh, talk about five minutes, they will be.
It's illegal, yes, they wanna, they wanna make sure. They might even believe that person's best, most, 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 most.
My thing is, we went through all this.
Um, I nominate Denny Seltzer.
Okay. Debbie Seltzer has been nominated for a director position.
Jamie used the water department attorney to defend him, even though he just. The learning will say, the attorney will say that not being legal. Cause that's what I think is gonna happen.
Do I have any other nominations for board member?
We voted a lot, but he's still got it. You're gonna have to get the law to get it, he can use the water department's attorney to defend himself.
Like I told him, that name is not used to be on that meter, not somebody else's name on the meter. Okay, 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 Cap, okay. I think that's, I don't, I don't think you've ever seen the records.
No, that is not ideal.
I'm sorry, Cap, what's your idea?
That's my thing about the board members, they need to be open to what the people forgive. Not like, no, 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 that's not how that works, because you don't do that.
Okay, I am not like.
Everybody's talking at once.
Pat, what did you suggest?
I said, if your name's not on that meter, but you're living in that house that was given to you by somebody else, and their name is on that meter, and you live in it, just like if, when I moved out in Mom and Daddy's house. Okay, their name was on the meter. If I had been living there thirteen years without changing my name to that meter, I wouldn't be legal to vote or hold the office.
Um, the other day, I talked, I talked to several people about changing the meter over to my name in my mom's house, and they told me not to do it because they would charge me three hundred and fifty dollars. I went back and looked, and that is not in the bylaws, but I can tell you this, the meter up there is in my name, and I paid for that every month.
Well, I'm not seeing you, I'm just saying me, anybody.
So, we need to, we need to have people change it.
I think that it should be, if you get a bill in your name, because when Mr. Pope tried to run, he paid the water bill, they mailed him a bill in his name, but the meter was in his son's name.
Right, yeah.
If my name's on it, don't send me the bill, because if you're sending me a bill, that is my water meter.
Correct, that's pretty good.
If you pay a water bill, it shouldn't matter who names it in, if Donald Trump comes and buys every water meter, but you still have your name.
A lot of people would change it except for, the old people, the last board wanted to charge you three hundred and fifty dollars, and it's not necessary, it's not in the bylaws.
That's what they told us.
I, but it's not in the bylaws, that's what's.
I can tell you, from working with the other departments, three fifty, everyone needs to quit complaining about that, because Nanticoa and Amber and all other great counties.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred dollars for a water meter.
The other thing is, we gotta get it in the bylaws, we gotta make it legal.
Cause that three fifty, everyone's complaining about it, if you get with everybody else, it's thirty-five hundred dollars for a water meter, because Phil from Roll Water District Seven, he said, my boys won't come to your house for less than three grand to put a water meter in.
That's crazy.
He said, y'all are three hundred, he said, my boys wouldn't come to it.
Well, that's the difference between this small, little, poor townhouse.
Well, I tell you, Rick, you're doing a lot of that too now, it's because you got so much fiber out there, and if, if they get one in five Rock Creek deals, they're in for a hundred, hundred fifty thousand more fine off later, you know what I mean, so it's.
No, they're out of anger. Well, like, Nanticoa's small.
District seven is Nanticoa, they're small, and I talked to that lady.
Okay, I think, uh, are there any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Our man in Lurin.
Did we have, I have a question. Why is it thirty-five hundred dollars to put a meter in somebody's yard?
They gotta be digging down in the.
That's what they try.
That's what they're right. Okay, but what about?
And then like in Nanticoa, if you have a meter put in, for thirty-five hundred, you own that meter. Meter for three fifty, you don't own that meter, you're just renting. They can come yank it whenever they want, it's theirs.
Okay, so what do I do? Okay, so what do I? So.
But you can't give your money back.
So, here's my question. I've lived there for ten years, I'm now legally married to my husband, his name's on the water bill, if I wanted to add my name to the water bill, is it still three hundred and fifty dollars?
It shouldn't be.
No, that's not in the bylaws.
And you're legally, you're legally okay because you just need one person.
Well, save your nine dollars, you can.
Yeah, but I can't vote.
Are the payments on how important it is?
Yes, but my husband don't live here, he's in Texas, he's only home four days a month.
You're still his wife?
But I can't vote if my name's not on the water bill. We're okay to vote, yeah, because it's a.
See, I can vote, cause mine's my wife's name.
That is crazy.
It is.
Well, y'all can. I think if you pay a water bill, your mother's having to decide, I mean, my, my, my.
If the water being cut off affects you, you should have a say.
Exactly.
I mean, that's just, period.
Okay, so that's a good point, let's fix it.
I want to fix it.
We can fix this shit. Because you guys not being able to have that name on there and them charging me three fifty is not right.
I agree.
So are there any other nominations for the water board?
Are there any now?
Denny Seltzer.
Oh.
I'm also willing to nominate another person.
What?
You want me to nominate? Well, I'm sorry, I'd like to raise your hand.
Oh, no, I was.
My name's Peyton Fawcett.
You gotta say them, cause you can't, well, here, if you got a name on retainer, and Coach had one from hell for ten years on retainer, he could vote because it's on retainer.
That's not in the bylaws.
Huh?
That's not in the bylaws.
It's not.
Now, now they done thing, now they like.
But they, they.
See, that's, that's what.
Then we never, we never.
That's what Jesus did.
That's how they end.
Person up here.
That's how they end. But that's like.
You know why I'm gonna say that? Cause I was gonna run to get on the water board before I did city council, they jerked my name off the water bill and put my wife's name on it so I could not run.
Let me tell you something, there's been a lot of things in the city and in this, that was told to everybody, cause I was told I couldn't dig a well, cause I already had a well, but then I told, Natalie the other day told people to dig a well. And I'm like, so what I'm saying is.
My family drains water wells, and the state of Oklahoma, all that says, have to register at the courthouse, that's the state law on any water well.
Right, no, they told me the city wouldn't let me, I wasn't allowed.
They can't stop me because there's no, uh, ordinance is here.
There's no city ordinance.
What I'm saying is, you're right, there's no ordinance, I checked. What I'm saying is, they tell us whatever they want, so we're all confused.
Right, right, right. Right, nobody knows the truth.
Exactly, that's why we've got the bylaws, and you guys, we need to get everybody some bylaws, cause it's your right to know, and if you wanna change it, it needs to be changed.
Who writes the bylaws?
We do.
The members, but the members gets like the ones that can vote in bylaws.
The members can amend the bylaws, we need a whole new set of bylaws drafted, and that's what we need to.
Our last was in nineteen sixty-eight.
But, um, the, the members about to amend the bylaws.
I'll give you something, right? Oh, my, 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 Oklahoma, you can't work with a well, it's a country.
But the thing is, if you want Pat, if you think something needs to be changed, you have the right to voice that, you can bring it to us, or we can, you can even stand up and talk about it. And then, then everybody votes, and if they agree with you, you change it, because your vote counts.
You're still over me.
I think, what needs to be changed? Cause I'm with you, I'm together, and I'm, you know, some have to make.
That, that just. But I, that's not in the bylaws, is it? But you just can tell.
I'm having pretty hard meetings.
Put him on your.
I'm surprised because I were making a map.
We found a lot of stuff, we had a, is that my brother out here? He called her about six.
Now, there aren't any, if there aren't any other nominations we need to vote and.
I'm not making notes, it's getting late.
Yeah, me too.
Do you wanna be on the board?
Yeah, sure, we'll skin it.
Okay.
Cause right here, this, I've heard this last five years, we know, but, and five, in the last hour, we got more done than's been done in ten years.
But I tell you one thing. There's not gonna be, we got bullshit, if it's cash assist price or it's money order assist price.
And another thing, he's playing, we want to, we want to, we want to get you that one, we want to order, we want enough of it.
I'll come hell.
Cause y'all did a good job, you did a good job, I have no complaints about that, I mean.
I thought that.
Can we run out for an operator?
Can we, can we do that, or we will have to run, uh, ads to, for.
When I'm in town, I'm an operator.
No, no, you don't have funny license, that's what, that's.
If she's on the board, you can't be an operator.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, if someone needs to.
Yeah, you can help, I'll, I'll sit there, that's wrong when you help, and I mean, you're not getting paid, there's no, better pressure, you can't.
Debbie Seltzer and Cody Beverly have been nominated for board members, I'm gonna pass around the ballot so y'all can vote.
Can we not vote for an operator right now in state of the world?
An operator has to be employed.
It's not a vote.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a vote. But you guys can do it.
Let's run a hat tomorrow that's.
Can we vote Cody in right now, hurry?
Just let him get in the application.
It takes a board vote, um, I have, uh.
You know, Paul Martin's, he's more leading the, the higher. Well, do that, because Martin's, you want to have a higher.
Y'all get.
It's not harder, it's, it's, let's get it done, you know, I mean, that's dragging our feet, I mean, getting in the conflict, so, like, something happened, I mean, you know, I'm playing, I mean, this.
I have a special meeting schedule for, uh, so, yeah, I might have a, I might have a, I might have a leg on it, but yeah, that's.
You said no name, you can't have that, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I'll come back. It's easy.
Uh, so he can do it. Okay, now?
I'm just hard. I'm hard to deal with because when it's broke, I'm fixing it when y'all tell me not to. I'm fixing it cause it's broken and it needs done. I just need everybody to stay out of my way when I'm building.
You don't want to vote?
No.
Okay, it's okay.
I just can't wait. You're about to win the award.
And take his out.
Have all the ballots been collected?
Are all the ballots collected?
That's, so, yeah, okay.
I don't know if any of them know. Cause Jamie doesn't, we have a lot of water.
There's one for Cody.
When me and Colton took over, there were thirty-seven waters.
Hey, one for Cody and Debbie. One for Cody, one for Cody and Debbie. Whoever wrote Cody down didn't also write down Debbie, so I'm confused if they don't want.
It's probably me writing Debbie down.
I didn't either.
If y'all wanna redo these.
Try, try me on that.
Me too, board members, not one like.
No, that's next one.
Seltzer over.
Loki wants to know, like, when are we gonna fix it? And I'm like, it's an emergency, okay? And they're like, well, when are you gonna start? And I'm like, you love it. And so, you tell me I can dig, I dig.
We can't do it like right now. We have to, I have, um.
I don't see why we should have.
You're talking about an emergency application? But we have, I can't. We need to vote, so can we just call each other and say, yeah? We're about there.
I know my boss man didn't come.
For a while.
Well, you get operated. Just cause that incident? Cause Greg, we're on the same thing.
At least that's.
Thank God I go over there every day, so everybody can get that free money.
I think gradually, it's like, it was like Cory in his class, the whole friend, the friend. Uh, it's him, John, Micah, or Martha. And.
You want him to jump on the water?
I'm not sure, everybody should get along, get the water.
I think, I think we'll be able to. I'm just, I'm doing everything by the book. We thought we'd have a new lawyer. Draft, you know, to get everything straightened out. Otherwise, this thing is not. There you go. I'll block that, either. That's what we do. The operator's going to, um, go by.
I guess I need to talk to you guys now.
Yep.
We don't have.
April, April.
But I'm not. They're charging me seventy dollars or ten dollars a day. They're gonna, I think, what, they're gonna have to turn all that over. Shall we get the new billing clerk? Can we just move down, we do it together? Can we get that, we work today, can we? I mean, we can all sit together and do the billing together. That way, we all know what we're doing. People's right, it's like, well, so we screw it up. Did you guys lose a little dog the other day? It said one of the mangas, her name was Odie, she was. Somebody said it was the mangas, and they were coming to get it. She was cute as a little thing. Cause she was still shaved, and she had a paper towel on, she was sitting on the bed. I don't really know what her name was. Because it pretended to say girl, Odie. So, I know she went to the vet, had some procedure, they had a collar on.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.